Good evening, I'd like to call the February tenth school committee meeting to order. And first up is the Celebrate Student Learning, the Lester G. Gates Middle School.
Alright, good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. We have Ms. Laverne here, who is our engineering teacher, and she's going to introduce our students' projects and kind of the learning that went into it.
Hi, this is Laverne. I teach sixth grade and eighth grade engineering at Gates Middle School. So, we do this project, my counterpart, Ms. Nice, is not here tonight, she is sick. And without sick, was sick all weekend. So she's, sorry, she can't be here tonight. But we do a computer science and engineering project together. So we combine our six-week mini-master eighth-grade classes into one term. So we get, we have them for 12 weeks instead of just the six weeks. And we did a PBL project. And this is our, I want to say this is our third term doing it? Yeah. So, I'm going to introduce, I think, the project first. If you could click through the pictures first, and then I'll kind of jump to the first set of slides with words on them, and then we'll come back to the pictures.
As she goes through those pictures, if you haven't had a chance to come see this in action, they do this incredible display for the community, and it's, it is some of the best learning that you're going to get to see. It's really wonderful.
It is, it's great. You've been able to come to the past, to two of them, yeah.
A couple of them, yeah. If you have a chance, it's worth the, like, half hour to come see it.
Yeah, the kids are so proud by the end, because it gets hard in the middle. And they're like, "Oh my god, I'm not going to finish," or they run into bugs in the computer program and they rip their hair out. But it's such, it's such a good challenge, because when you hit a problem and then you can kind of work your way through it. It's, it's so fun to watch them do that. So Spark Wonder is just, it's a collaborative computer science and engineering project. And so, students learn new skills, they learn computer programming, they learn about manufacturing and building a prototype, they learn about project planning. We have a new role, we have three people on a team, on some of the teams now, and they're a manager. So they're having to learn about, like, project management and jumping in where they're needed and how to make things work that way. And we talk a lot about the connections you can make between the physical world and the virtual world, and kind of making a computer program work with a controller that is not a keyboard. So they're not allowed to use the computer keyboard at all, they have to build a controller that controls the program that they built. And they get connected through what's called a Miki-Miki. And I brought one of the few on the, let me see. So this is a Miki-Miki. It's just a micro, like, a controller board that has, like, keyboard inputs, and they have to use this to kind of connect their controller to the computer program. And so they're limited by what inputs are available to them. And so it ends up being a pretty creative process, as far as what they can build and what they can't build. So if you could jump back all the way to the pictures, I'm going to have Emma and Sarah come up.
So, I'm Emma Braun.
And I'm Sarah Francis. Our project was about climate change.
And the objective of our game was to have the polar bear move from iceberg to iceberg by answering multiple-choice questions about climate change. And you would answer the questions by, like, tapping your foot to the iceberg. And there was three icebergs, like, A, B, and C. And you would choose the correct answer under a time limit. And if you got seven out of 10 correct, then the polar bear would reach land and, like, reunite with its family. And if you got less than that correct, then the iceberg would sink and it wouldn't reunite with its family. It was.
This is our start button. We don't have the iceberg with us, but this is just kind of like what our project looks like.
One of the most challenging parts of it was actually the programming, as you probably guessed. It was really hard, it was really easy to delete, which was kind of a problem, because I spent a long time working on something just to end up deleting it by accident. And I also accidentally switched it to Ukrainian, so that was kind of unfortunate that I had to fix that. But it was really, really fun, and I learned a lot from it.
Yeah, we enjoyed collaborating with each other, and it's probably, like, one of the best learning experiences that I've had all year.
Alright, I think the next one is dinosaur bones.
Alright, so I'm Nick Trimitazi.
And I'm George Guttler.
And we decided to do our project on dinosaurs. So, what we, or the objective was, of the game was to get past all the levels. There were obstacles that you had to jump over, and there would be dinosaurs that would tell you hints and facts about dinosaurs. And some of the challenges of making it were, like, there's a lot of, it's really challenging to code, and it can get overcomplicated a lot, so that was one of the biggest challenges, I guess.
And that's me on the far right, teaching a parent how to play the game. So, I made bones and eggs. The eggs was the start button, and the bones were jump, up, left, and right. So, the bones were made out of dry clay, and what happened was, I decided to use clay as a, like, mold for my controller. And pretty much what happened, I had to look this up, so it said it was conductive on Google, which I believed. And by the time we got to presenting the project, it worked throughout, like, the entire testing process, but as soon as we started it, it broke down pretty much, and it dried out. So we decided to use copper tape and copper wires to try boosting the conductivity. And in the end, we just accidentally put plastic tape over the copper wire, which pretty much ruined the entire project. But besides that, it was all in all a good project, and I feel, and it was an awesome project. Yeah.
It worked, it did work.
It did work, yeah.
I saw it work, I'm glad. Thank you.
So, I'm Maria.
Oh, you can skip ahead, sorry. We had one more team that was going to be able to come, that did a basketball game, but instead we have a phobias team.
I'm Maria Froyo.
And I'm Ymani Somerville. And we basically did a project about phobias.
And the point of our game was, basically, there were two girls who met in an elevator, and the elevator began to shake and experience these different types of things. And for our game, you had to press the elevator buttons, or what looked like buttons, to learn about certain types of phobias. And for our controller, this is a piece of foam board that I cut out, and it was originally a big piece. And then for the buttons and, like, the squares, there are also more pieces of the foam board. And we used aluminum tape over the pieces to make the keys work in order to learn about the phobias, and the rest are kind of just, like, decorative.
And I did the coding part, and it was, like, really hard, because I had to make sure that they didn't all speak at the same time, and, like, the seconds were, like, right. And there was a couple glitches there and there, here and there. So it was, like, a little frustrating, but Ms. Laverne and Ms. Nice, like, helped me, encouraged me to give back, because I kept wanting to give up, but they got me. And it was, like, a really good project, and I'm glad we did it.
Yeah, it was really fun, and, like, at the end to see your final project.
That was all, I just wanted them to come, and I wasn't going to go through the whole process. You'll notice each of them had a different topic, so they choose their own topic. And we tell them, it's got to, you know, it should be a topic that you want to kind of pay attention to and look at and research for the full length of the project, so something that's really interesting to them. And that's it. Do you guys have any questions, or?
Just want to add one of the things, this, I think, Ms. Laverne and Ms. Nice are being humble here. What an incredible opportunity to learn not just coding, but to understand a little bit about circuitry and electricity, and do it in a way that lets students apply their interests to, you know, all of this, all of these skills and all of this knowledge. So each kid who did a project got to pick a topic that they were passionate about, and that increases engagement, and that's where you see so many kids working through the engineering process. That can be frustrating sometimes, when the code becomes Ukrainian or doesn't work, whatever. It just, it hits so many of the things that we talk about for project-based learning, and just an incredible experience. And kudos to Ms. Laverne and Ms. Nice, who's not here today.
Well, thank you for coming in. I'm always impressed at the ideas that the kids come up with. You know, they're just, you know, they're not just eighth-grade students, you know, they have, they're people and they have passions, and it's just, I'm always amazed. And it's way more fun than what it's like.
Yeah, we got to flip the topic selection this term. We tried something new for this term, where they, they choose their topic before they know what they're doing. And we got some really, really interesting topics this time around. Like, what's the Mandela Effect, and what's, you know, what mysterious disappearances, like, that kind of really fun, interesting thing. So, it's been, it's been fun. These topics were awesome, too. It's just, it's really interesting to see what kids are, kind of get thrown sometimes, like, someone's doing, like, situatantings, and you're like, "Oh, really? Ghosts? Okay."
Yeah, I felt like every one of the students said that they had fun doing this, and for me, that's really important. Like, they learned stuff, they learned things, but they also had fun and enjoyed doing it. And hopefully, all got As.
I think you did, actually. Grading is always a blur, it's hard, too. You know, you don't want to, Ms. Nice and I always say, we don't, that's like our least favorite part, is having to, like, grade and assess it, because everyone works so hard. But just, we, like, stand by our rubric and just try to be objective with the check boxes. Alright, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Next up on the agenda is the Second of the Minute. We need January 6th, 13th. Anybody have any comments on the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the January 6th, 2020 minutes.
Your second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the January 13th, 2020, 20 minutes.
Your second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the January 22nd, 2020. Twenty-seventh.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the January 22nd, 2020.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up is the student representatives.
Okay, so, for this week, one of the main things that we wanted to highlight was the Drama Club, Hard at Work Again. So, last week was a very busy week for them. They're putting on yet another show, and this one is called Thirty-Nine Steps. It's more of a comedic show in comparison to more serious shows like Dracula that they're currently working on. So it's a nice, light-hearted show to watch. And this production is actually almost completely student-run. It is being student-directed by senior Kyle Moon. And surprisingly, there's only four actors total in this show. So they're each playing various roles throughout the show, changing costumes. And because of the small amount of actors, there's a large amount of drama involved in the tech behind the show. And last week, they were working hard, every day after school, staying after so many hours to prepare the props, lighting, transitions, everything that you don't see on the stage, but that goes into it behind the scenes. And so, on Thursday last week, they were able to go to Acton, Foxborough during school for a few hours to have a tech rehearsal, because on Saturday, February 8th, they attended the Thespian Festival in Acton, Foxborough. And so at this festival, they were able to perform Thirty-Nine Steps, and there were different number of towns that also performed their forty-minute shows. There were also some individual events in this festival, so we had students competing with monologues, technology, or singing. And there were some workshops, they got the chance to interact with other drama communities in this area, and see what they're working on as well. And this was actually a very successful festival this past weekend. We had two individuals that received awards for their work in technical theater, Victoria McCallion and Skylar Stander. And Skylar also received a scholarship, so congratulations to them and to the entire crew. And this show will be performed at Cituit Art Center sometime in March. We'll let you know what the date on is when it gets returned. The senior class at Cituit High School is also continuing for graduation preparation with the student government. So they're organizing CAFGAP sales this past week, and there's also been the sale tickets for the all-night party this past week and this week, for fifty dollars each. And so the all-night party happens after graduation, this time at Starland instead of at the high school. And this program has had great success in the past, a lot of effort to ensure the safety throughout the night of graduation for our seniors, so that has been a great thing going on. And there also has been the last meet for SHS Gymnastics Team with the Patriot League Meet. And so this happened on Saturday, February 8th as well, at the Mass Gymnastics Center in Tunbrook. And so they compete against eight different surrounding teams, and they put a lot of hard work in this season, they've had a great team spirit and sense of community, and this meet was a very successful end to their season. There are four awards that individuals received for their events at that meet and for the season as a whole. Lucy Finkel, Clara Hughes, Chloe McAllie, and Alan Seidel.
Alrighty, so this weekend, Cituit High School has a mattress fundraiser for the music department. Did we ever figure out how many dollars we raised? Hasn't come back yet, but these events usually have a very good turnout, and usually make a lot of money for the program, so that's really good. Yeah, I'm really glad Cituit Friends of Music and the band have partnered up to really take initiative, do mattress fundraiser, to go to Disney. Tomorrow night, in CPA, there's going to be a really jazz from 6:30 to complete eight, where various Cituit high school and middle school jazz bands and jazz choirs will perform and just show what we've been working on. And it's a really exciting night, hope you guys, I hope you guys will make it, you'll enjoy it, nice. And this week, actually, on Wednesday, the band will be attending the Old Town, not Old Town, la-la-la-la-la, South Shore Band Festival. There's so many band festivals, I cannot remember all the names. It's being held in Marshfield this year, and basically, students from around South Shore get to perform for each other and collaborate, and it's just a really good experience, it's competition-free, stress-free. I look forward to it every year. And another thing that we didn't actually add to our notes this week is in Mr. Venery's internship class, we're all kind of figuring out where our internships are going to be outside of school, which is really exciting, which gives us a chance to, like, explore new fields. I'm trying to get an internship at Suasco, hang on, see I get it, to just kind of see what teaching might be like, if I want to go into that. So, we'll see what happens.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
I have a question on the, I know the graduation part, as you said, is usually here at the high school. I'm just curious how the Starland thing came up, and like, is something that we need to approve?
I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know.
I'm just curious, I think it's a great idea, just a different.
Right. I think it's already been approved.
Yeah, it's not something that's true to approve, the location, that it's within this, you know, the community, it's within the state. Something that's been done by a parent group as well, which has been really helpful. And I think one of the challenges that they've run into, and I think the high school has run into as well, is that as you prep for the after-graduation party, it takes over from one of our eminations, it displaces students. Well, they start with one, and they sort of spill into the second one, and so for an extended period of time, kids and staff get displaced for a while. It's in the spring, so typically, it's not a problem, but if you have bad weather and they're not able to go outside, and they're jammed up trying to find locations. And not to plug Starland necessarily, but they're a facility that just can run events. You have as much space as you really want, lots of different spaces to do, you know, sporting events and, you know, basketball all night and those sorts of things, so a little bit more elbow room for kids as well, and less pinching on the day-to-day within the gym and the high school.
Phil, do you know what they're doing the same, they usually, when it's here, they do a theme, and they have games. Are they doing some of that, too, or is it strictly the Starland stuff?
I'm not really sure.
I'm pretty sure that they're going to bring, like, some of those elements that they've had here. I don't know if the extent of the theme and decorations will be the same, and I think that they're going to take in some of those, like, amenities that they've got at Starland. But, yeah, I think there'll be more to come with that.
Alright, next up on the agenda is the leadership report.
So, we'll begin with our report today for you, a couple of items on the situative experience. One that's really neat here, we talked about trying to find authentic audience for our students. And so, kudos over to our seventh-grade English-language arts teachers. We brought together a group of high school students and literary experts, authors and other literary experts in our community, to do a panel discussion for our seventh graders. And what was neat was, it was an opportunity to learn a little bit about the learning experience and what authorship is, but it also serves as a guide for the work that our seventh graders are going to be doing themselves, so creating their own works, too. A nice chance for them to get expertise, not just from their peers or from their teacher, but from experts in the field, as well as some of their older peers. So it's a nice way to utilize the combined campus, with, you know, both high school and middle school so close to each other, and get experience from experts in our, in our community. Obviously, February's Black History Month, you see a highlight there from the Wampanoak Elementary School. They've identified different activities and experiences across their school, help students learn about Black history. One that I'll highlight, too, is at the very end there, music teacher, Mr. Munt, worked with the students to sing a few different songs about Martin Luther King Jr., and they did a performance to celebrate Mr. King's message of inclusivity and love as an entire school, which I thought was really nice. Number three is another highlight over at the Gates Middle School, also in that programming vein of the curriculum. You can see the link there, but what students have been doing, again, with the help of Ms. Nice, has been to develop their own apps. So, different than what you saw here with Spark, where it's using the physical world, students did, they're programming right through scratch and built their own apps. And what you see here is just one example, and the committee's got a link to see all of them. But students had to design from scratch the way in which their app would work, from storyboard to the actual programming, work out that engineering process as well, because whenever you're doing programming, you run into errors in the program or errors in the code, you've got to go back and try it out again. Really, really engaging, and also a nice way for students to learn the basics of computer programming. And often times, we talk about 21st century skills, and we talk about language acquisition. Computer programming is a new 21st century language, as is Spanish and French and German and all those other languages. Programming is just as valuable as, as all of those spoken languages. And we're excited to see our students developing those skills and starting to apply them as Thanks to Ms. McCarthy, we had a number of our high school student athletes who participated in the Massachusetts Women in Sports Day, and you can see them there, pictured over at Daniel Hall. And lastly, but certainly not least, I'd like to welcome Ms. Karen Hughes today. Ms. Hughes comes to us from Milton, she's recently been brought on board with the high school as our interim assistant principal, just finishing up about a week and a half now on the job, and getting to know our kids, getting to know our, our staff and our high school in general. And she wanted to come here today to say hello in person and introduce herself to the committee, Ms. Hughes.
Hi, how are you all? Very good. I'm really excited, as we were not, just getting to know everyone. Everyone's been so welcoming, from staff to students. I've been around the building, trying to stay out of my office, and working with Bill and Lisa, and just seeing what successes Cituit High School holds, and what students need as far as sports, what families need. And I'm really excited to serve the Cituit community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Two last quick updates for you. One is actually just about Student Opportunity Act, which I know we've talked about ad nauseum over the past several months. The update you have here, though, is, sorry. The update you have here is a regulatory component that's part of the statute. So essentially, when the Student Opportunity Act was voted into law, this component of the language that requires it's part of the governmental oversight of the funds, that all school districts, all 351 communities and districts in the Commonwealth, set a three-year plan in place for the SOA, for the Student Opportunity Act. What's interesting, though, is that a lot of districts, Cituit included, already have a multi-year strategic plan, and all of the indicators for student success is part of that. So DESI has been charged with developing regulatory guidance on what the plan should look like and how it should work. The law is really broad, that it should be a plan, it should articulate over three years, usually dedicated to finding ways that school districts can close the achievement gap with traditionally underperforming or underserved populations, so that could be minority groups, it could be students with disabilities. DESI just came out with regulatory guidance last week on this, they're due in April. So it's a tight timeline for the state, for school districts. We're now processing all of that regulatory guidance. The leadership team at Cituit will be coming together later this week to go through that and start doing the drafting process. We expect to have a draft in front of the committee in March, early March, so your first meeting in March, with a vote likely for the second March meeting, I said, for the 23rd. Three things that I think are important for you to keep in the back of your mind as a committee. The first, DESI's been explicit about this, is that the plan should focus on doing a few things well. Most school districts already have a strategic plan, it shouldn't be another plan, it shouldn't be more bureaucracy in front of the state. The second, it's got to stay focused on how we close the gap for, again, underperforming groups or traditionally underserved groups. And the third is, whenever that plan is developed, however that plan, you know, articulates the resource, it's about identifying the rationale for resources that will be coming in, not just this year, but through the life of the SOA. So the item or program that we're thinking about for a plan, it's got to already be reflected in our strategic plan and in our budget, and should be something that our school district wants to continually invest in. So you see a couple of examples that come to mind as I start to read the regulatory guidance. The first is the adoption of that unified elementary math material, we talked a lot about that, because we went through the budget process. We have resources to be able to invest in that, thanks to SOA, and unifying those materials helps address the needs of all students, including students with disabilities, minority students, so on. The other that may be an option is thinking about the expansion, again, of our JEMES program into the middle school. So same idea, right, targeting services and programming that helps address the needs of, Ms. Gates, students with disabilities. So our team is going to be working on that framework for the committee, and we'll have something to you in March. I wanted to put that on your radar, we've talked about the SOA for the past several months now. More to come as we develop that. The last, now that we welcomed Karen here, we have to change gears and start thinking about the permanent positions for our high school principal and obviously assistant principal, these are interim roles. What you see in front of you is our projected timeline for the hiring process, the posting hiring process. We expect that we'll get our posting out there around the end of January, with the intention of timing this cycle, this hiring cycle, through the super search. You can see that we're looking to try to get a wide range of voices represented, as we always do whenever we have a principal search, everything from students and parents to the teachers and program directors and so on. I appreciate that the committee has lots of other committees and subcommittees, including the super search going on now. But I'd like to take a moment, if we can, to nominate potentially one school committee member who'd be interested in being part of the screening process, take a look at candidates. If you'd like to make modifications to the timeline, certainly as well, this would be a good moment in time to start thinking about who from the committee may want to sit on that search for us.
The only modification to the timeline that would suggest is the, I think, March 30th, the interviews. That is the one, the school committee, that's part of visiting districts for the super search.
So maybe we bump that a week, then?
For somebody from the committee.
To get them voted?
Yeah.
Alright, we can bump on that for a week.
What's the commitment again, that week of March 30th? What are you going to submit there?
Yeah, so the commitment's there, right? We expect that we'll do, like, do that, like, I call it a norming meeting, and that's when I just walk through the process and talk about the rubric and, you know, what it means to be on a search team for some. be on a search team for some folks that go on search teams, they'll be their first one, others will have done this a lot before, so in some cases folks may find this a little bit old hat, for others that's really important, new knowledge for them. And then they get materials via, we do a shared drive for everybody so they get all the materials in advance and all the resumes and so on. We do that outside of meetings, so people do that on their own time. We then come back together to screen those individually. We set a list of, depends, but usually five to six candidates, that can vary of course, for actual interviews. And that usually is over two days, because the interview each one lasts about an hour and given that we've got employees, we usually start those in the afternoon. So it was around 3:00, 3:30 until 7:00. After three or so hours of interviews, folks were tired and not on the A-game and so we usually break that over two days.
You don't want to decide now. Do you think Nicole and I are the ones that are gonna get it?
Yeah. I feel like it's recommended that one of us is on it, correct?
Yeah.
It's nice to have it and every time we hire a physician, we show you at least one school community voice. Yeah, I just wanna be, comments for you Janice, I just wanna make sure that, not to belittle either position, but I wanna make sure that this committee isn't as large or larger than the Super search committee. I think there was a recommendation, there's only 12 and this is 13, so I just, I wanna just, I wanna manage that, I guess. I'm assuming that we might be looking at it.
Yeah.
You don't have to decide now, but I wanna put that on the radar and what I'm trying to do is get most of the groups who are gonna have voice to get back to me February break so staff can, you know, to get back to them Friday, every scout to other groups out here, SPD and so on, get back to me over the break, because I know they've got a busy week this week for them. So then when we get back from the break, we're able to start bringing this group together and sending out the initial information, you know, emails. Again, set our, our norming date for the week of March 23rd. Usually we do it that day, so we get everybody, we take a look at all the calendars, everyone's got lots of commitments, everyone's got lots of things going on this time of year. So we try to find interview dates that would work for the group and then we work backwards from there with all of them. Yeah, if you wanna think offline and get back to me next week or two?
Just that update about the SOA, it seemed like that was something that you've been doing this, a month ago, and it's when the district from Massapeck went to Florida, and not that specific, but it was a strategic plan.
It remains...
But it seemed like those two goals, I think.
It remains the same, so maybe just another minute or two, I can just share more with you. So the intention when that came through the legislative blender, if you will, was speaking, he'll say, "We're gonna give out money." Okay, we wanna know what the money's being used for. And just like we do IDA grants and Title I and Title II A, there needs to be some mechanism in which districts identify this is how we're gonna use this resource. What's especially interesting from DESI's perspective when we gave us the regulatory guidance is the documents that we create, the plan if you will, can include something that's new, something that's enhanced, or something that we're continuing. And I think that's a nod to school districts who have a strategic plan that articulates, here are the priorities you wanna tackle, and are building their budgets accordingly. Now to be fair, there's some districts that don't have that at all, and so this plan may be the first plan that they're developing. So DESI's in a bit of a bind, do not micromanage school districts, but also stand by the SOA's language that requires some documentation of how the resource is being used.
All right, thank you. All right, next up is acceptance of gifts.
I'll actually bring Mr. Beatty up, if you don't mind just for a moment. We have an incredible donation here, I'll pull it up for you. I have Ms. Rebecca O'Toole and I'll turn it over to Mr. Beatty.
Sure. So we received a donation of $300 to support the Gates Art Club and we're very grateful for this donation from a community member. We plan to use the funds donated to continue our kind of public displays of art throughout the school. And if you come into Gates, you'll see our dining commons, we're displaying student work in all different spaces and this donation will allow us to continue thinking of new and creative ways to display our student artwork.
Thank you.
I'm looking to accept with great appreciation the $300 donation from Rebecca O'Toole to our Gates dining commons.
Your second?
Second.
Almost in favor?
Right.
Thanks Rebecca O'Toole. Next item is gonna be close calls, vestry and proximal. New business, the 2021 school calendar survey.
So is the, maybe she probably would have old business now that I just say out loud there. We talked briefly about the fact that September 7th this year is very late landing for Labor Day. And so the committee had a conversation, you know, last meeting, a meeting or so ago, about sending out a survey for the community. What you have in front of you, you know, your backup is a copy of what the survey would look like, it's all branded Go. The only guidance I looked for from the committee was how long you want that to go out and if you want any tweaks to it. So you can see the language there and what I propose is that after tonight, if we put it out, and typically you wanna have surveys go out and just like send out several communications, hey, it's a survey, do the survey here, it's a survey, and then have a finite time to quote. It doesn't mean you can't extend it though if you want it to be longer, so the guidance I looked for from the committee tonight is just how long you want it to be open for, knowing that our next step should be something like using this data along with other factors to determine the calendar for next year. We'd wanna have a draft in front of you for the March committee and then some final vote on that in April.
I think the level of detail is good because it gives the reasoning why we're looking at it, we started before looking at it, because we haven't done that in this district in a while, really ever.
You try.
The only concern I have is just the, the dates, the dates that happen, so people only have it for four days. People would probably say have it for two weeks. I know it's, you know, it's getting into school vacation week, but it would just give people the opportunity to go and respond. I think my only other question is, so typically we send this out via email, is there anybody who can post this to the district website so someone can get the email?
Yeah, for sure.
They can, you know, click on the site and respond to it.
So they extend through the break?
I think that's a good enough time to compile everything, right? Maybe a second.
Yeah. Any other guidance, questions, tweets to that?
Just had a quick question on the, on the start before Labor Day, we had a call on about September 2nd, is that the first day for students?
That's correct. So you can see here the, the second line there, you'd have PD days on August 26, 27 for staff, so they come beforehand. And those come from our PD council, that's the recommendation that the PD council has. And the same is true with after, so like this would be that first possible day after Labor Day, because Labor Day's on the 7th obviously, and then the staff PD day would be two, three.
And would, they would have school on the 4th, which would be a Friday, or no? If they start on the 7th?
No, you can't have school on the 4th, so if you roll back up here in some of the, and this may be too fine-grained, but there's actually some clauses in a couple of our contracts that disallow some of our employees to be here the Friday before the Labor Day weekend. So you couldn't have PD, you couldn't have school on that day regardless, be it, you know, starting before.
So we're looking at the clause till Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
You don't gain a whole lot of days, is what it comes down to. But again, it's a hot topic.
I'm curious what other districts are, I know we're going back on the 7th.
There's a lot of districts that start before Labor Day anyway, so this, even if we did it one year, we'd still be not, ignore, right? A lot of other towns. Just throwing that out there.
We're not gonna win no matter what we do.
I mean, I can tell you where my district, we walked in and they were like, oh, we're starting on the 7th. That was it.
Yeah, it was no survey, it's ready.
Yeah, and then we always start on the 7th.
Right, but maybe it's...
Yeah, I mean, you're right, you're gonna get split. But they only gave three days.
We're not getting a lot back over the 3rd, but at the same time, it's, like, obviously this winter is not bad at all. The first time that I've gone back before Labor Day, it was, sorry. I'm going skiing next week, I had a little... We had all that snow that year, so it was one of those issues where we were looking at going out, I think, on 28th, 29th, June, right, I think, we had a target conversation
Well, I think, yeah, I mean, it's, if we start before Labor Day, the last day of school would be June 18th without snow days.
22nd?
22nd. No, the first day of school would be on September 2nd.
Oh, sorry, which one?
Yeah, and the last day would be June 18th, so it's still kinda pushing towards, like, if God did this, you know, storm this, this century.
Yeah.
You know, I think we, yeah, we can, yeah.
Well, a couple of years ago, we missed one on Saturday.
Oh, yeah.
And that's, that's the concern, I mean, if we go after Labor Day. You're looking at Saturdays first.
When you're discussing emergency days.
Yeah, right, yeah, we did, we had emergency days, we had, I think Good Friday was on the table, Saturday was on the table, and we voted, you guys voted, because we were, we voted up to eight of them, yesterday.
Five, we're down.
We ran by. But we, we, we needed to vote three more.
We had a couple of Saturdays lined up that we could have recovered.
We'll make those adjustments, we'll get it out tomorrow after we, on that. And yeah, look at the calendar over your shoulder there, it's a number of days we've been very fortunate this winter. Thank you for your guidance on that, we'll get that out.
Right, come on, like, the, is this, is the...
I'm sorry?
I just, I don't want to comment right now, but we cannot, teachers contract, cannot come back any earlier than Monday before Labor Day, which is August 3rd.
So we can't have the 26th and 27th?
And maybe the Friday?
I was wondering, so I was wondering about that and I was gonna ask, they can't go back to teach the Monday before, that would just, we cannot back to work, so he doesn't differentiate between PD days and not.
We look back with our PD councils, I know we have union representation there as well, it doesn't matter to me when the day is, but I wanna make sure that whatever the day is with the union, you feel comfortable with it and we'll...
Again, it might be a...
We can only go back to Monday, Saturday.
Definitely not the Friday, but I'll look back with our union, I'll look back with the PD council, I just hope they're disarmed without as well.
A couple of years ago, we were getting chewed in, was one of my last questions, just to make sure.
We, we do only have the two days in there, but I'll double check the note for sure to make sure we've got the right day of the PD day, we don't want them to, I wanna make sure they've got the days that make sense.
Sorry, one last question on that, is the survey gonna differentiate between, like, staff, family?
It's not, it's gonna be one survey unless you'd like multiple surveys to go out.
No, if I were one survey, I just didn't know, one of the questions was, are you employees at the public school or services?
No, it doesn't, it's really just, it's one question, given these items, do you, is this, would you per this or that? It's binary.
Okay, so you're gonna spell it out completely of the dates? Because I think like if you think about, if it's broad and you wanna start before Labor Day, after, you're thinking about in your head, you know, apparently, wow, that's something cool, you can practically, but when you spell it out per union contracts and everything, it's like two days.
Is it worth it?
Just sort of congruently, it's just like, I don't, yeah, so people might second guess going back beforehand if they saw that.
Saw how many days it is. Yeah, you don't gain a whole lot if you go back, a couple of days, you don't get a lot of days necessarily. I'll look back to shoulder them, make sure we've got the right date for them and before it goes out, we'll double check.
And that time is our question, please.
Yeah, if they're not, if they don't have any skin in the game, they're talking about the end.
Yeah, it's true, it'll be interesting if the staff also wants, like, a little bit of this, but we don't need...
Okay, next up for new business is the cafeteria MOU.
Yeah, you have in front of you the cafeteria MOU, we went into Impact Vibing with the union, we had a retirement of a manager at the elementary level, we also had a retirement here at the high school of a manager and assistant manager level. Those two positions were filled. This was not going to be filled, we had identified that we had had two, we were looking to put on the two managers basically here at the high school and at the middle school. So we went at the Impact Vibing with the union and we came up with the solution of not filling the elementary manager position, keeping the four elementary assistant managers which we have, filling the high school manager position and filling the assistant manager position at Cushing. And David, the food service director, and before her Sarah, and before her Sarah, you know, Sean always identified needing more hours for, for lack of a better word, of workers, somebody in the kitchen helping out, not so much with the table. So we came up with a solution, we think of two shared, three-hour positions, one at the secondary level for Gates in, in the high school to be switching out and one shared at the elementary level, again, for all four elementary schools on some of the days that we may need to mix out. So the assistant managers will work that out at the elementary level and with David's, David Stevens, food service director, and the, the secondary will work out how that's going to work, but we're gonna get a couple more workers in, and that's basically what you have in front of you. So I recommend that we approve this and we'll send it to the union so that they can take a look at it and hopefully it hasn't, hopefully it doesn't connect with big changes. It's not, probably not going to, because this is exactly what we agreed.
So under Part 4 of the agreement, it looks like Natalie only has one cafeteria position?
No, they have more than that. They have an assistant manager and a manager in a three-hour position that's in between there, a couple of days. See that? We're looking, we're looking at it.
I'm looking at that.
I know, I see it right now.
So that's wrong? That's wrong, okay.
Yeah, I, I think it might, and that's something that they would catch.
Yeah.
But the gist of it is right. We're not gonna fill the elementary manager position, we're gonna add two shared positions, one at the elementary and one at the secondary.
So the shared staff member could rotate to the other schools depending upon, I'm not sure what dictates, I'm not sure what dictates D, but I'm assuming...
It's very difficult because you have an hour window, because all kids in all schools, the same, you know, 20 minutes, there's three lunches at the high school within an hour, there's three lunches at each elementary school for 20 minutes. So it's a balancing act, if David and Sarah before him and Sean all identified, how do you, this is one of the things that the union came up with and we came up with, and we think it's helping out.
Just as, as, what kind of budget impact does that have?
Probably there'll be a little bit next year, not so much this year, there'll probably be maybe $10,000, $15,000. The good, because this is, we may not, we may find that we need the manager, we may not need as much of this year. And so this allows us to do it for the next four or five months, figure it out and then we'll realize the savings if there's any next year.
Are, do you think there's a particular reason why they didn't wanna go with the manager position?
It was, we identified this in negotiations two years ago. We've always, we've always identified that. We negotiated back to a position which was acceptable to the union. They knew where our position was going to be and this was never, never to demote or should change anything, this happened to be true attrition, that's what it says here. So we had a retirement at the manager level, we had an opportunity to send out with them, we came up with this news.
We're voting on this M O U, and then they'll adopt it, or they'll sign it and you all vote?
They will sign, then Janice will sign.
Will sign, okay, well, we just vote this one?
Yep.
Did that happen?
Yeah, if there's minor changes, I mean, you can have the gist.
And you can hold off on your vote here as well, that's what I mean too, I mean, it's been a working process and a whole thing to work on, with the, with the two now. We're trying to move forward to get the positions codified, so we can get it before they fill.
Do we have an agreement from this little line?
Do you want a motion?
Um, Edson.
Well, then, we'll amend this.
I'll make the motion to approve the cafeteria staffing and random of understanding as amended.
Okay, now is the first opportunity for comments, questions, and public.
I just have a quick question about, um, school calendar, just one more thing to think about. Will there be a change in graduation date if there, if we start school earlier, or, or earlier before Labor Day? Will there be a change to the twenty, twenty one graduation date?
I mean, I guess if we decide to change the calendar, we'll have to look at all the dates that are in there.
Twenty, twenty, twenty one graduation, I plan.
It's May this year.
It's been ongoing.
No, it's May, yeah. Yeah, it was earlier.
There's a certain number of days.
Last year and this year it'll be May, which is obviously the first day.
Maybe there's a certain number of days, yeah. There's a certain number of days you have, things you have to fill, so we'll come back to the, uh, uh.
It's kind of from that first day.
Kind of the first day?
Yep.
So could senior public school, they're starting after the first? Next up is old business, the video scoreboard.
Mr. Lewett and Mr. Umbreon, as we talked about, we need to have a, um, a process for developing a revenue stream across the scoreboard. We promised to feed back with a series of potential donors. What we have in front of you is a spec to feed the scoreboard, that's just a reminder, and then I'll bring up in a moment, uh, the list of potential donors that Mr. Umbreon and Mr. Lewett have been looking at. I'll turn it over to these two to give a little more detail.
So I know you were looking, you were curious about, uh, possible donors, so there's a list of at least fifty-five, uh, possible donors, and, um, that's, that's, I'm gonna say minimum, because I'm sure when this starts, uh, people are going to want to, um, donate and become a part of this. Uh, which I am excited about, um, but as you see, we have different titles there, like bags and medical information, realtors, car dealerships, athletic equipment, insurance companies, restaurants. So all of this information, all, all of these different categories are within what we were talking about, you know, following school policy. And, but what I'm hoping is, like I said, some groups are going to come and ask if they can be part donors, and I'm hoping that, um, without getting them appro, to make it easier on you, not getting them approved if they fall under these categories. Um, when, when we're looking at restaurants, we're not talking about any restaurants that serve alcohol, nothing has, obviously, there's no tobacco, anything like that on here, we have hair salons and, uh, but the miscellaneous has some of those, those different groups, you know, like UMass Lowell and Quincy College for the fact that, you know, we work with these, uh, schools. And so I, I wanted them to give an opportunity, you know, to possibly advertise some of the donors. So as you look through those groups, um, that's what that covers, but I'd say probably ninety percent of these, uh, donors are, are Sichewit.
I just add one other layer to, to Bill's perspective there, you know, some of the work that we did as part of the policy effort here, uh, was to make sure that our policy allowed the committee to have oversight of this process, without micromanaging this process simultaneously. And what we charge the team with is that, as you look at potential donors and partners with our school district, that you keep in mind our core values as a school district, and that if it's close, we're not open to pursuing. We want to make sure that we're working with organizations that understand what Sichewit Public Schools is all about, understand that we're a pre-K to twelve school district, and that while oftentimes you think about Sichewit High School and our sports and events, that this is a community space, and that our community uses it regularly.
So, that, that's a list of people that, that companies that have already said they would donate, or?
No, these are, these are the companies we're gonna start to call, and like I said, this doesn't, this isn't, this is, most of the towns are, most of the companies in Sichewit. I think there's some streets and stuff that we might have missed, the back roads and everything, but, um...
Let me just add to that as well, one of the things that we recognize is that this is new territory for our school district, so I asked the team to come present to the committee before we start making those calls, to make sure that we're transparent about it, we're all on the same page about who's getting those calls, the kind of organizations that we want to partner with. So we would like this committee's blessing before the team starts going out and having those conversations on behalf of the district.
And I, and this has already happened, I received an email of, um, somebody that lives in Sichewit, but their business does, isn't in Sichewit, but would be willing to donate, and, and, you know, so I added them to the list, and I just had a feeling that that's gonna continue to happen, you know, with surrounding towns, and, uh, people that have businesses or companies that maybe aren't in Sichewit, but are in surrounding towns, but also, uh, some of the companies that are in Sichewit.
So, well, the scoreboard companies, is that...
Daktronics.
Daktronics, yes.
So they're gonna help you figure out how much to charge, how much time you will get on the scoreboard, and, uh, do they, do they pay more, do we get more time, you know?
That's exactly what it is, and, um, we have an advertising package that talks about, you know, having, um, a commercial, or just having one of the static banners that are on the side, you know, because that'll be, when the board goes up, those static banners are gonna be there all the time, you know, um, it'll be, it's predominantly gonna be that, yep.
Okay, so the banners, you have more than one company, okay.
Yeah, we have seven different layers, and each layer, um, has a couple of different details that, um, you know, obviously with the top layer, being more money, but you're given more.
I mean, it would be nice, if all these companies want to advertise, that'd be great, but like, can we give them their time?
Yes, there'll be enough time from the beginning of the game going through, because you have, you have timeouts, you have the quarter changes, um, exactly, you have halftime, there's, there's all those spaces during the game where they're gonna have an opportunity. And you have the opportunity also to show multiple ads, um, during that time, so we could have two ads up there at the same time.
And this would be for all, all games for every sport?
Well, it's, it's pretty much mostly every sport, yes.
Just for the fall, for the fall stores and the spring stores, usually field, right?
Exactly.
Right, when the, when the field's big.
Yeah, yeah. I know, and that's, I've just, all I did was punch up Google Maps and just started going right down the list.
If a P T O, like, a school group wants to advertise, are they gonna, do they have to go through the same process of having to pay a fee, or they, is there a link for a school where they're gonna, you know, discounting it and show something for free?
I missed the first sentence.
It's like a P T O or a school counter?
Oh, they wouldn't have to pay, no, like, there's, there's lots of things that we can have scrolling down the bottom of the board, you know, school announcements or anything like that, but when it comes to P T O or anything school related, we wouldn't charge anything for that.
Like a school fundraiser?
Exactly, yep, so we could have, uh, class announcements up there, um, there's gonna be many opportunities to do that.
I would just temper, again, expectations, we're starting small, though, right? So I think that's one of the things people see the board, that, uh, lots of visions of what it can be, and we want to do a few things, do it real well, and build from there, and, again, kudos to Mr. Umbreon and Mr. Lewett for their efforts on this thing, it's been a long time since it worked, but, uh, there's a lot of energy and effort in this, especially Mr. Lewett has been thinking about this for a long time, so we appreciate that that work behind this needs to get this, this list squared away for it.
Right, and we still need to raise that number number to meet your hat of this.
Yes, sir.
And the language that we have to agree with Daktronics is, if we don't get the number, we call these folks and say, we tried, it's not gonna work out, thank you for your energy and time, we can always try again, but we're not gonna have, you know, taxpayer resources offsetting costs. We don't have a deadline, so we usually plan to do about a year, uh, but we have some flexibility there with the work. I will say again, because Sichewit doesn't have a large, uh, commercial base, you're gonna know pretty quickly once the calls start happening, in this region, do we have that capacity or not? And if we do, great, and after a while, you're gonna find yourself getting so far outside of the bounds of Sichewit that it's not making sense anymore for the companies or for our community necessarily.
I was on the policy committee, so I have a little bit of knowledge about this, you mentioned you have restaurants that serve alcohol, I thought you had talked about restaurants or bars.
No, I think, I think, talk about like, pack stores.
I'll interject that if I can, so again, I asked our team to be very conservative with our first go, I want to underscore that this is the first time we're doing this, so I don't want to be in the gray in any way. You're well within your policy with this, could you push the boundaries of your policy? Absolutely could, would I encourage you or recommend it? No, it's the first time our community has done this, we should make sure that every organization that we work with is well within the bounds of our core values, and would be without question, um, important to you.
I think part of the discussion was like, if we had a building, you know, a lot of it, Milwark, so, you know, town, you know, Cosmo, so, yeah, alcohol. So I know. Most of the time, and people go there for their pizzas and sandwiches.
Takeout.
Takeout. No, I'm saying the Milwark is a place that people like to go, so it's, you know, it's been around for a long time, but we'll start off.
And I, I understand what she was saying, and that popped into my mind, and that's one of the reasons why you don't see any of these places.
I guess we, you know, other than brewing, we're sort of on there, but, like, Oro or Milwark, places to go and have dinner, that, it's, yeah.
This slate, it was one of the things that the committee asked for, that you be able to review the slate, and then the reservations that you, um, had the opportunity to deny.
When do you think you'll start reaching out to the base?
Um, if, if this is okay, I'm gonna send out the, uh, M O U tomorrow to be signed, um, by them and us, and get that taken care of, and we're gonna get started right away.
Your motion?
I move to approve the video scoreboard advertising proposal as...
Twenty second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Have a good break if I don't see ya.
Next up is the South Shore Educational Collaborative, never should propose.
You have here back up, uh, the information for the South Shore Educational Collaborative expansion, I gave a primer on that in the past school, uh, school committee meetings. Tonight, I just made a formal vote of it, there's two documents that need to be signed, that must be involved and signed on behalf of the committee. The first is the, uh, final page of their amendment, and the second is an individual acknowledgement of vote that you have here as a committee. After we do the vote tonight, if it's voted in the affirmative, we'd also send a copy of the meeting minutes over to the South Shore Educational Collaborative Board, again, which I'm a member representing Sichewit, as well as the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. If you have six out of the ten overall communities that are part of the South Shore Educational Collaborative vote in front of it, to the span, the expansion will be, um, moving on to the board of elementary and secondary education, we will then verify that information vote independently, if their vote goes through, we'll have to scan.
I don't think we have discussed this, um, previously, does anybody have any other questions?
I think this is, yeah, I think that's my only question, Mr. Burke, and has there been any negative feedback in any other districts that are part of the collaborative?
Not that I'm aware of, I speak with Rick, um, the executive director there, I mean, every couple of weeks, and, um, it seems to be going very smooth. We are out ahead, so we are one of the early, potential early adopters of it, um, he's had no concerns brought to him, and they usually come pretty quickly to the executive director.
Move to approve the, uh, women handsome, um, there's one more.
So I, I do the, the pursuant articles on that, just for their formal minutes.
Pursuant to Article eight and nine of the collaborative agreement, such that our educational collaborative board of directors of the collaborative, um, amendments that agreement, women handsome, which is a school district acting by its community is hereby admitted as a member of the South Shore Educational Collaborative, and creative, the collaborative shall be amended by the women handsome, which are members of the collective.
Twenty second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is the kindergarten registration update.
So is that time of year we've got, can we go, all things kindergarten registration going? We are. We talked a little bit about kindergarten enrollment and registration on the Saturday budget meeting, uh, because of the proposal to embed our half day K, and so, what I wanted to do is just get the most up-to-date numbers in front of the committee, we usually do an update on all things kindergarten enrollment in March, but I wanted to make sure that this was on, on the collective radar. So what you have in front of you are two bits of data that I think are helpful, the first you see there is current enrollment actuals for, uh, our kindergartens, those are actuals pulled, gosh, three days ago, four days ago, whenever I get the packet ready for you. You can see that for every, uh, building, you also have in parentheses the half day K current numbers, so, um, it's included in that number, so for example, Cushing fifty-four, one of those students has a K, and so on. I also pulled for you, though, the projections that we do for elementary kindergarten enrollment, and gosh, we do those projections in November probably, and we're trending right along, pretty accurately, uh, kudos to, to the team, to their efforts in, in taking a look at, um, preschool data, all the way back to birth data for, for out years as well. You can see there an overview of our process for enrollment process, just for your backgrounds, I have answered questions you may have about that, uh, and then what I ask the committee to consider is that, if our numbers remain static for a half day K, that we put a, as a future committee item, agenda item, from our second to, uh, to make a vote on, including half day K, embedding half day K into one of our sections, full day K, so that students remain in their home schools, uh, wherever their, their street might be, and so that we're not having a separate district-wide half day K section, uh, dedicated to one of our buildings.
We need a vote to do that?
You don't need or not need a vote to do that, but I know that there was passionate views on it, and so, when there's passionate views on anything, I'd like the committee to weigh in on it, and to go vote, to that we're on the same page, and that I've got direction, and guided to it.
I also noticed Hattaway lost thirty points.
That's a projection.
Oh, projection.
Right, so what you see here is this is current kindergarten, and then this here in blue is our projections. And they, they do vary year to year, we're not always, not always perfect, but, right.
Just a couple of questions, the, um, obviously, I, I recognize the current, sorry, the current actual enrollment and projections, but I noticed that all of the schools, specifically, Wabiduck, we have fifty-five, we are projecting sixty, uh, Jenkins has forty-nine, you're projecting fifty-six, but Hattaway has thirty-eight projected, and you have thirty-eight enrolled. Why are we not projecting additional at Hattaway, I would expect, assume, if we reject over forty, then we have a potential staffing concern.
Sure, so again, I want to emphasize, those are the projections that occurred in November when we first gave you our projections, those remained the projection, um, and then we just, from that point on, once we begin kindergarten enrollment, we just start monitoring the actuals going forward, uh, and that's true of all of our sections, we're gonna monitor all of our enrollment sections going forward. You can see that if you're part of the process, when we go through our process for kindergarten, is the fee-based... is the fee-based program. What we try to do is cap those sections right around 20. I want to be transparent with the committee, they sometimes go above 20, for a variety of reasons, most often just continuity of kids graduating. We try to keep them right around 20, and so there are cases that often happen in our school district, in which a particular building gets up to that cap, and a family still wants to have the full-day K, and they have the full-day K at different schools. Then in first grade, they go revert back to their own school commitment. And again, continuity of services, there are some occasions in which they'll have to remain at the school if they start kindergarten. So it's not as cut and dry, black and white, as numbers on a spreadsheet. What I always tell our team is, anytime we're looking at a spreadsheet number, these are people, in this case, little people. And so we try to be considerate of their needs and their family's needs as well, and we try to be as fluid and flexible to their needs as we possibly can, while still ensuring that we maintain decent class sizes for our classes.
I recognize, I guess I might rephrase it differently. We're projecting a 10% increase on other schools, but a 0% increase on Hadley, based on current signups versus projected enrollment. So I'm just curious why we did projected increase at Hadley, but we did all the other schools?
Again, I want to emphasize, this projection was done in November. These are projected numbers back in November, based on the preschool numbers that exist in the community, and what you see here are the current actuals.
So these were projected back in November, they're not revised projected?
That's correct, these are not revised projections, not actuals. We just, once we start getting the registration going, we just work with the actual, why project it more, we have kids actually coming in on the rolls.
Correct, I agree.
Also, just to note, half-day kindergarten, we're embedding them next, so there was five kids that were ahead of the, two of them moved into first grade, so there was five kids in half-day kindergarten that went up 31. So those three kids, so really the number is 10, or as in non-third. Two of them moved into first grade, they were ahead of the half-day student.
They're town, they're district.
District-wise, street. The other three are district-wise.
Do we get notified if parents, because I understand you look at preschool's births to project, coming to kindergarten, so do we get notified if parents choose like a private school for kindergarten, you know, instead of sending them to a public school?
Not for kindergarten. We get the notification starting at first grade, if there's still community members, so like, if they go to the inmate, for example, that information we get. If they go outside of that, we don't necessarily get a notification about that. Because kindergarten, here's one of the challenges kindergarten generally. Because the law doesn't require the school-based kindergarten, there's a little bit of flexibility that families naturally have. I think I mentioned in the last meeting, one of my kiddos, full-day kindergarten, he was good. My other kiddo, it seems to be best for her to be a half-day kindergarten. And so families making some of those choices, face that with the kiddo, my guess, too, like in general.
How often will we get an update on these numbers?
As often as life. We're at about 90% enrollment, that's typical, and so this time of year, we're roughly 90%. Would that change? Of course, with influx, we certainly could. But historical numbers, right about 90% of our registrations are in this time.
I want to belabor this, but is there any, I guess, process in place of when a home is sold, that the buyers notify the town of census that they have kids in a particular grade, like, is there any? Or is that something that we could look at potentially, that somehow being notified of a move in theoretically?
I'll say, there's not a formal notification process like a census in that regard. However, I can assure you, just from picking up the phone, as soon as a family moves in, and often times well before, my office is getting a call. And it isn't everyone, sure, I'm sure it's not everyone, but I, especially this time of year, and then again in the spring, we just get a lot of calls of, "I'm looking to move, tell me if I live on this street, you know, walk me through the street listings." And just again, to give you some process background, we don't count a student or give that kind of information ultimately until they've got a purchase and sale in or lease in or rental agreement, because we have a lot of requests, but not all the time. They can always come with tuition necessarily.
I think moving forward, if you can update us, does it need to change that class size or sections?
Of course, anytime there'd be a new section change, especially after the budget, absolutely. I happen to get into you every month, it's just they're not going to change a whole lot from this point on, there'll be, you know, one or two here or there.
I think if that second grade had 47, like, you're glaring at the problem.
Sure.
Do you have any second grade as well?
We don't typically get a lot of changeover after kindergarten, although again, it does happen from time to time. So, for example, our Wampanoag members, we may see increases and changes because of the potential growth that you see there, while it's a 55-plus community. Families who are 55-plus may sell close, right over, and that opens up to a teenage going, a two-bedroom home, or a family with a third grade and a fifth grade, or whatever it might be. So we anticipate some small amount of that changeover, but that could technically happen anywhere in the community, right?
So the third bullet from the bottom, on the second page, talking about waitlists. Is it for embedding the half-day kindergarten? Will we be saying that we're going to cap it 20 students for full day, but then we're going to have 20 half-day?
20 is 20, so it's about the section necessarily, not that it's half or full, because you want to be the maximum number of kiddos. So for example, if a half-day kindergarten is embedded there, and in the morning you have 21, that's the number that we're working with, even though in the afternoon you may have 20, because the half-day student may step away. You always want to think about the max, not the minimum.
So will we, and any type of, is it kind of based on the timestamp of the registration suffer?
That's correct.
Are we giving priority to someone that has full-day K that wants to stay in their neighborhood school versus someone that has half-day K?
No, not preference necessarily for that at all, so it's purely a timestamp.
So the first 20?
That's correct.
Or 21, or whatever it is, okay.
That's, we have half-day or full-day, it's the first one.
Okay, I just want to clarify, like, full-day K and full. So I just want to make sure.
It is because you can't waitlist for half-day, right? So half-day is the requirement, and so there'd be never be a waitlist for half-day, you're in at half-day.
Okay, next up is the FY 21 budget update. Some answers to some questions.
So again, it's a follow-up to our Saturday meeting, you have to take a look at the preliminary budget, the preliminary operating budget. We've got, we'll have an updated formal budget on the second for the committee. Given that we'll have the update, I'd recommend that you have a vote slated for that over March 23rd. But that way, it gives you a whole extra month to take a look at it, ask questions, have that thoughtful dialogue and debate about, and you know, all those items. And that's still being well within time for our April town meeting. We're going to continue to monitor a few elements that I think are important, keep in the back of your mind. Obviously, any inflation coming out of Beacon Hill, that's first and foremost, right, staying moving reasonably forward. Looking at track, how does district cost projections, again, those always fluctuate, so we want to make sure we keep an eye on those. Still assessing staff retirements, that continues on through the spring often. And the last but not least, as we just talked about, enrollment in general. Obviously, kindergarten enrollment is top of mind, just because of the time of year, but all enrollment, things like the Aggie and the locational enrollment as well, we keep a close eye on those things as well, because those impact on our budget. So as we're going through the preliminary budget, a couple of really great questions came up, and of course, we had the debate on Saturday to go over a lot of that, and some of those questions just require follow-up and require some research for you. So what I've got is just a series of those questions and some responses. Some of them are just, it's this versus that, and other cases, it's information that we'll make sure reflects for you in the formal updated budget for the second. Some points are worth discussing as well. So the first is school level materials costs, I think Mr. Bringley brought this to bear, to be able to create distinction in our budget around the cost that we have for our specialized programs, or for example, how much does it cost to operate the JEMs program outside of Jenkins Elementary School in general? Cost for staffing, cost for stuff, and then it really started this discussion of, what are the materials? So what happened to do that for you, there's two items that I want to keep in the back of your mind. The first is DESI requires us to report those programs as part of the school. So that's why you see them embedded in your budget that way. That's the way DESI requires us to report, if the thing, if the event, if the material is spent, if the staff works in a space, that's the space under which we budget them, and therefore report on the FR1 at the end of the school year budget for, for our, for the same. The other support to keep in the back of your mind, we'll happen to break that out for you in your updated budget on the second. But it's important to know that your materials are often shared, so I just kind of want to be transparent with the committee. In some cases, there's really specialized, special material implemented, and in other cases, if you're in the Jenkins, you use some of the Jenkins' paper, pencils and pens. If you're in Hadley, the same is true. So there is some natural overlap there as well, so when you see those numbers, ask you to keep those two in the back of your mind. The second question was about a district line that talked about telephones, and other district miscellaneous equipment and supplies. You see the breakdown there, and we're happy to share that in that same detail in the updated budget as well. The next is just capital planning, I think, again, Mr. Bringley mentioned, I'd say it was the town's capital plan proposal had 40K in there for smoke detectors, Cushion Hadley, it was supposed to be 50K. Thank you for contacting them, I think it was the type of. Special education out of district projections, our colleagues in SDA had asked a little bit more about that. We took a review of both of those documents. The review of those costs shows that the information that's in your budget is the correct information. Our apologies for the error on that one page handout. I always had those conversations up in the conference room a few months ago. Question from Mr. Gates about the Wampanoag staffing costs. You don't pull those costs for 40, you see the FY 20 versus FY 21, the cost down to a dollar. Reflects the difference of about $150,000, just about a 4% decrease year to year, year to year, will represent cola steps, lanes, changes for all of the staff and all of the personnel members for the Wampanoag. And lastly, materials and supplies in general, the committee asked for more detailed materials and supplies. So what we do, remember, we have our team that is principals, coordinators, department chairs, directors, submit their budgets to our software system. We ask them to put notes on every single thing they ask for. We don't, all of them, what we can do is we'll consolidate a lot of that, so you get the big picture of the kinds of things that each building is purchasing and investing in. We'll try to do like the big highlights of those costs, so if they've got $10,000 of costs, there's going to be a couple of those that are big purchases, and then some more that are like, we're adding more pens. So just a little bit of experience, we'll keep out some of the smaller minutia there, we'll make sure that we highlight the big and especially new purchases for every building and every career. So we'll have an updated version of the entire budget, we'll go through it on March 2nd. Again, those items will be reflected there, and if you have any other further questions, you can certainly take a look at those as we update the budget going into that March cycle.
Did you say that we began, that you want us to vote on March 23rd?
Yes, so you currently have your slated vote for March 2nd as part of your bound there. But again, given that we had the delay there, and we had the new state and local rate numbers coming in from the governor's budget, that shifted us by about a week in general. You can still keep your vote on the 2nd, but I think it'd be beneficial to have some conversation on the March 2nd meeting, and we'll go up on a vote, and we'll be able to vote on a comeback vote on the 23rd, in case you have questions or, you know, want us to go back and do some research on something for you.
Do we get a number counted?
That's correct.
Yeah.
And I've got an example that you have in mind there.
I just wanted to clarify, my question on the Wampanoag teachers, it wasn't the difference between 20 and 21, it was a difference between the original budget request, your fiscal year 20, the actual. So I think I'm comfortable.
Oh, I see what you're saying, the reconciled from special town meeting versus what we were.
It was like, yeah, like 200, it was, we requested 3801, and we only spent 3575. That was my question, but I think I know the answer to that.
And we can follow up a little bit as well, have a take a look at, you're looking for like FY 20, that was discussed in April, and then what is essentially the reconciled budget when we had actuals.
Correct, we spent less.
Yeah, I'll double check, and we'll have.
Still budget, still budget there.
We'll pull it for you for sure.
Just wanted to clarify that, but I think I know the answer to that.
Okay. 20 actuals, 20 budget, 20, still budget. I'm sorry, 20 reconciled.
Yeah. I mean, it's good, we spent less than we budgeted, so it's good.
Any others like that, we're happy to go do the research on it for you as well, we'll check something.
No, just to move to amend the calendar.
Correct, right.
Move to amend the FY 21 budget timeline to reflect the budget review on March 2nd and the budget vote on March 1st.
On the second?
Second.
All right, here's the second opportunity for comments, questions from the public.
That's a principal search question, is there a reason why we are calling that almost concurrent with the superintendent's?
It's kind of fallen the tail end of the superintendent's search, but one of the dates that we've ever been doing.
The March 30th?
Yeah, I think the.
Love that.
Exactly, it's going at the same time.
It is, but a lot of it.
We start the nine, we also start at nine, the superintendent's.
Right, but a lot of that, the principal search has to do with more like the background checks, more of like wanting.
Can I add to that as well? I completely agree, there's lots of searches going on. The challenge is, if you don't start your search soon, you're going to lose out on candidates that are high-quality candidates. And so you want to post relatively soon, and then you want to engage those candidates, otherwise, they're going to go elsewhere. And so February is typically the time you want to get out for principal searches. If you go to March, you could go to March, of course. My experience, though, February is when you want to start getting a notification out, and start getting your groups together to start that search.
So the one week where I asked it to be changed was, right here? I just wondered if we were going to vote on finalists over ten or six, and if we need to have more of that interview work and resume work with the principal after that, so that that person was truly involved in the process, rather than just the finalists?
I'll offer just more perspective, it's really, please, you have a choice on this for you.
I do want to add one thing, I mean, if we appointed a superintendent, there's no guarantee that he would in fact be able to.
Or she.
Or she. He or she would be able to, you know, in that timeline, participate.
It would be a courtesy that person would provide you, they're starting, it would be July 1, so this would be work outside of that contract anyway. I'll just give my own experience, I came in, you had turnover as well, so I came in April and did exactly this process for turnover, that you had your elementary principal positions. Again, the committee's, you know, we'd like to move this to, I'm trying to coordinate with you, but I would, my only recommendation is that if you don't start this process soon, you're going to miss out on some of my quality candidates.
And is there room to add site visits, like, to add such site visits?
There won't be a site visit for your high school principal search.
There isn't.
I've just, I've participated in that for staff here that have been for principal over the past, yeah, a few times I've participated in that.
Did they have high school?
For, for. We've done it for elementary. I've had people come here, John Willis, yeah, people come here, and we worked, Donna, and people came here to talk with us about that.
But we'll be doing that part of the process.
Any other comments or questions?
Beyond the superintendent search, we need to, just be. So we have the proposed makeup from NAST, and I sent you the makeup from previous search, which was 17, so I think we need to kind of work on, kind of tweak what was presented to us in NAST.
Have you talked to Jim?
I have not. I have not, no, I think, I mean, that was his recommendation, but I think we should be able to buckle out based on his recommendation.
I think you mentioned before that the reason it's 12 is really because we're in a tight timeframe and we have a large schedule. However, just based on the fact that for a principal, we're having 13, I just can't respectfully have less members on this school, the superintendent than I can for a principal.
I just want to find out, 13 members, superintendent.
Okay, so there's an even, there's an even number, I still think that you should have more. I happen to defer to Jim to say it's going to be really hard to coordinate schedules, but as you know, Jen, we've received.
Multiple.
Multiple input, multiple.
Multiple emails.
Emails about people who want to be on it, so I assume that those people recognize the time commitment.
The time commitment is on the website, so they have seen it, they know like.
So it would be my recommendation to add. At least three, yeah, three to five additional members.
Have you gone through the people that have reached out yet, so when they spotted it in the community?
No, we had one, most of them, I would have to say, say the majority of them were parents. Some had students in every, like every grade level, like every elementary, middle, nine. I think we have a large pool.
I think I've heard from at least 10 people want to be a part of it, but if we have a, we pay five.
But I think we have to take those people and divide them and then choose.
Right. I can see us, this private community member is not, I can see us having one too. The last time we also had a member of the board selected. We don't have that much. Representative of the town.
Yeah, town and such a representative.
Oh, that's correct.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, sorry. Who else want to have a read this guy?
Right, I think we do.
I think that needs to be bulked out a little bit.
Right.
Whether it's the director of services or, you know, we have a special education parent and some of the special education staff, we have that, the principal search. Which brings only one administrator, how do you hear?
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, I think we need more than.
I'm not trying to bulk this up, like you said.
I know, but I think, you know, with looking at what was on the last, this is fraction.
Right.
I know a lot of principals on the last meeting.
I think you bulk it up and then these people, I mean, if they don't step up and assume their responsibility.
The way we're last time, the difference is going to be for a product. It's hard to follow.
Yeah. And like I said, that schedule is up there, so everybody. So let's start from the top, the administrative, we have only one representative. Parent representatives, we have one PK to five and one six to 12, I think.
I think you at least have to have a.
I think you do, please. I mean, there are parents that have kids and we're going to, right, we could, between the people that have reached out, we can, from that pool, have two parents that cover all of that. And we do have a community member at large, so it would be potentially three parents. What's your number three parents?
I would say three parents.
Yeah. Three.
I like that. We have enough interest in it, right?
We have plenty of interest.
That's true.
They're making that commitment. I don't think necessarily you need to break them down or something. I mean, do you want to have two of their parents cover them for their grades and then have like three maybe hundreds of large, because they're parents, so.
One, maybe not, sorry.
I'm saying I don't think the pockets are necessarily important, it's just more the number of people.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we have a lot of people that are interested, vested interested. So if we had three parent representatives and one at large, that's four. Four here. Six. School, they're already. So giving three parent representatives. Stick with the one here at large.
I agree with Mike, it might, yeah, I'm okay believing one.
Yeah, one, one of the parents. It could be an adult, it could be something.
You're going to break the parents, so one.
One at your school level, yeah. We have the representative town situated, the metro representative, micro parent. And one special education parent plus staff number. Student rep. I'm going to go back to the staff. As currently what is going to propose is one, two staff numbers, one PK to five, one
If you have three, why doesn't it make the total?
I know you had reached out about the proposal.
I just, I feel, obviously, the three of us feel very strongly, our input's important to the world.
Right.
Almost the closest. I also feel, I don't want to take that voice away from teachers at all. And when I see the balance of the principal search is very strong in teacher voice, this is not at all.
Well, this is what, I mean, this is, we've got to be.
Changing, you had emailed back saying that possibly doing two to three union leaders and two teachers.
Well, I was looking at, you know, I guess you have to figure out which voice you would, I mean, my, Greg would have, there was something, you know, I mean, it's middle school, right, to property chair, I mean, I want to, I want to have more voice from the staff, and I know you have the SDA need representation.
Right, so I think it's two separate things, is what I'm saying. I think there needs to be teacher voice.
Right.
I don't want to be considered teacher voice on this committee. It's important I have my union hat on. I'm sorry. I think it's important that I have my union hat on.
For this.
First of the teacher.
That's what I think.
And I just don't want to take the opportunity away. We have about six people interested, I emailed them all the dates, so they know they're from your town, and then, I mean, so we can just wait and see.
So I think if we had one from elementary, one from middle, high school, and SDA grad.
One SDA.
You want to hear from the staff, you're not hearing from five of the unions. That's where the.
I've had questions about that too. I did hear from one union saying, are we going to be represented? I said, you can reach out, I can't answer.
I know, I know.
I would say two though, just from the last time we did this, the screening committee was a pretty. It was a smaller group, but we did the inside visits, and we did the public interviews, we got a lot of feedback from staff, all six unions, from administration, and that really drove the decision out of there. So even though there might not be a lot of people on the screening committee, I know three years ago, the former municipal committee did a lot of reaching out to staff, and got a lot of feedback back from staff, and asked for, we got a lot of, you know, that helped during the decision process. So this committee might be small, you know, the public section will get a lot of staff feedback. So at the end of the day, we're hiring your boss, so we're not going to, you know, do anything.
And to be honest, I have no one from high school or gates, it's going to start with all elementary people. And if two department chairs and the rest are elementary teachers, I think it would be okay to have two, like Greg and I are thinking maybe we'll do this, and then have two people, I mean, ideally I have PK to five and six to 12, but PK to five with an department chair who does six to 12.
And that's what I think, I think five.
So five, not four.
That's strictly like.
I'm sorry.
But that's strictly, that's.
Okay, we know the union.
Right.
I just think we have to be careful, if we're having a 15 member committee and we have five SDA members, we've got to be a little bit careful. I mean, I should say any representation, we don't want two, you know, a third of the committee being represented by one particular group.
Well, I mean, the last. Four. Looking at the last one, so it was the last search. It was department chair, elementary teacher, secondary teacher. And then there was SDA representation, one.
Which now we have a co-rent, yeah, the SDA is different now.
So we could have elementary, secondary, two of us here.
That's fine. I think we have to agree, we have to know how many total numbers we have.
That's the same as.
The last one's 16, not 17, right?
Yeah.
So this could be four out of 15.
That would be 15, well, six, 17.
All right, that's fine.
I don't know, I mean, I think it's important to have a lot of voices in there.
So everyone will have to agree to that schedule, as long as they can do it, then we can add.
That's what I said, I was going to say immediately, I said, here are the dates, if you know you can do them and you can't do them.
Right.
We're waiting for this time.
Right.
All right, so. Four? Yeah, I know.
No, no, thank you.
That's the total. Me? Oh, yeah, it was two administrator, three parent reps, rep of town, the metro rep, special ed parent plus staff number, student rep, community member at large, or.
Two admin, three teachers, two.
I had two, two admin.
Yeah. Two admin, three teachers, two. Can you email that out? Can you email that out to the pollist? How are the students aware of this? Are they going to get it?
Student representative, how did you decide?
She's not here.
We can start with.
I think principal will go, who went through, say who wants to join, they can.
Okay.
One of our.
How often do you speak with Jim?
I'll speak with him.
I'll be able to. Make the vote, do a lot of voting right now?
Yeah, we need to go.
Need to read all the petitions? Are you making a chance to?
I'm going to make a vote.
Thank you.
All right. I've recommended that the school committee vote the makeup of the committee as mentions, two school committee members, two administrators, three parent representatives, representative of the town, situated, one metro representative, one special education parent, and one special education staff, one student representative, one community member at large, two SDA representatives and two, two teachers, one from elementary and one secondary. The intention to vote the actual members at the March 2nd, 2020 school committee.
2nd.
All those okay?
All right.
All right. And next up is the facilities update.
In brief, as you can see, January is not a very active month. We did finish the emergency station over here at the high school, we put in a room for some, trying to pull in a, you know, sort of private conversation room for PIPR and all that stuff. And also, our townwide facility study, it includes all of our six buildings. One building was on second shift, we go around with the representatives, that or probably one, probably four, five days. And that results in a prioritized, prioritized, and worked even out 20. Other than not removed, no, which is great. It's probably among that.
So the facility study, I mean, we have the capital projects.
Yes.
So, and that has a lot of overlap, or was it?
We haven't seen that study. We have all that information, we gave them all that information, the Habib report again. We have Habib report from 2004, 218, 219.
So he went to the buildings and said, look at this.
Yeah, look at all this, yeah.
It made for a smoother analysis of our building, because we've done some work basically on it, whereas some other buildings in town that we had not had analyses done, they need to spend more time in the crawl spaces, in the attics, with the HVAC.
Any questions?
All right.
Thank you. Foreign signatures, signups.
Yes, there should be three of them there for your warrant signatures, and they were not signed by you, Peter, right, or Mike? Nope. Otherwise, anyone would.
And next up is correspondence, and in your packets, you will have your correspondence with one. You all have your cards. Valentine's cards, going to your. Oh, okay, sorry. I want to thank the students at Wompeta School for sending us this lovely Valentine's.
They do a nice job every year, it's one of those things, it's like, put the smile on your face, remind you why you do this work.
They're adorable.
Good.
Thank you.
Kudos to Miss Whitney and her team, they.
I won't read it aloud, there is. And next up is other business. And future agenda items.
Actually, I just want to make sure, sorry, to go back, I just want to make sure that we just reviewed the.
sure that, we just reviewed the superintendent search committee, but how, is everyone that we're trying to reach out to, are they going to be notified that they have an opportunity to participate in this?
There's a letter that I will sign.
That's the letter, you let us see their.
That's going to go out.
Jim will send those out tomorrow, if once you tell him, oh.
I have to sign it.
This week, yeah.
Okay.
This letter, yeah, he'll make it up. See the way it's.
We have to change.
We just change each one.
So, so in form, like, it's going to be email, it's going to be mail, like, where is it going to?
Janice, could we, I mean, the only, I did that last year, I'll, depending on who the makeup is, it will go out to, you know, for the student rep, we sent it out to the high school principal. So we'll have to change the heading on each one of those letters, going out to whatever group we need to target it to, Kim and I will work on getting those.
I know we've already received a bunch of parent interest, so.
We have those, but.
But would we solicit more, or will we just pick from the ones that we have?
I'm sure, I know that we'll get more.
Yeah, I think we'll get more, and then I believe the last time, we had quite a few, and they went into a hat, and we just drew a.
I just want to be sure that people, everyone's aware of it, so that they add it to, to add their neck with the hat, just want to make sure they don't miss.
We sent it out to all the elementary principals, and they reach out to their PTOs.
Okay.
And get interest, they send us names, and then we draw between the ones that we get in.
And everyone who's already submitted is already on that list? Do we put in the hat?
Yes, we have those.
I want to thank everybody who's reached out, I mean, there's been a lot of people I can't figure out to give back to, a lot, but I appreciate you.
And Ron, and the future agenda items, we, like, end of March, beginning of April, just getting that in on the, on the title of this report?
Yeah, absolutely.
We don't necessarily need to bill or, you know, to come back, but just.
Just where we stay with like, you know, dedicated money to this point, right? You said like, this is how much you'd donate, in like two months, not, you know, March.
Okay, I will, I'll actually.
2nd.
All is okay?
All right.
Thank you.